Put another line on. What do you mean, put another line? They had a line to. They had a special, they had a line that was $29. They like to add a line. And I want a new phone with that line. They get, guys, oh, okay, we can do that.
And just leave your old one in the drawer for a while.
And I said, and I want to transfer this phone number to the new phone. The new line. The guy says, you can't do that. I says, why can't I? It's my number. The manager come over and he's like, there's nothing that says he can't do that. But why would you want to do that? It's just, if you can see what I'm doing here, it's pretty easy to figure out.
Who's your carrier?
Verizon. So they ended up doing it. I invested $29 bucks or whatever it was, I ended up getting a new phone.
Adventures in cell phones.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And they make it confusing. Make it as confusing as it could be.
They work off of scripts.
I don't know. Find out.
All right. Good evening. It being 6:30, I'm calling this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. Note that we're being recorded. Uh, video by, uh, public media and also on audio for the purposes of note taking. Couple of pieces of business tonight. First one, seven progress have, I understand you're waiting for a client. All right, we'll move that a little later.
Thank you. What, you motion for that?
Uh, no, we don't. Uh, there's, there are no times stamped on any of these, so we're, we're okay. Um, is there anybody here for 59 Parkhurst Road? And anybody else expected? Okay, so we wait for them as well. Um, all right, well, then let's go through new business, old business committees and get that out of the way.
Okay.
Oh, here's Henry.
Here comes some old business.
Oh, your voice.
Charlie is new on television.
All right, do we have any new business? I know of none.
None, nothing.
I've not been tagged. Okay. No new business. Do we have any old business?
New.
It's a quiet summer.
Yeah, thank God.
Yeah. Do we have any committee reports? Anybody, uh, spend time with their committees?
NEMCOG didn't have an August meeting, but, I'm sorry, uh, July meeting. We have an August meeting coming up and there's nothing new in that. It's pretty quiet usually for NEMCOG.
Actually, September.
Sorry, September, so we didn't have the August meeting. Summer's gone by too fast. Um, and there's some, uh, it's going to be interesting to see what the 911 regionalization comes up because I, today that LOL's opted out, so.
Ooh.
That's going to be interesting to see where that goes at this point, so.
Yeah.
And, uh, once I have more information, I'll let you know.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
No.
Okay, and I don't see any reason to go into executive session, so we won't be doing that. However, I have a hunch that 59 Parkhurst is here.
Yes, we are.
All right. In that case, uh, this is item number two under new business. We'll go back to the, um, the seven progress a little later. Um, this is an application submitted under CEIOD, a new application, I guess, 59 Parkhurst Road and 3 Jean or Jean Avenue. Uh, do we have anything to read on this?
No, there's nothing.
Okay.
Well, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Douglas DeShane, representing, uh, Aaron Hall LLC. Uh, with me this evening Jonathan Hall from Aaron Hall LLC, as well as Katie Enright from Howard Stein in Hudson, the, uh, civil engineers on the project. Uh, we are here before you this evening seeking your determination of applicability of the CEIOD bylaw on a proposed project, uh, at 59 Parkhurst, um, Road and 3 Jean Avenue. Uh, some of you may be familiar with the site. Uh, it's a site of a, uh, I guess, a long closed car wash that was established back in the late 60s off of Parkhurst. Um, Jean Street is a, a road that runs parallel to, oh, in fact, we have a plan. Uh, here's Parkhurst Road. Uh, as many of you will know Walmart, the back of Walmart is here. And then Jean Avenue is here adjacent. Our site sits here between GNAV and, and Route 3, which is right here. Uh, there are no other buildings or development between us and the highway. In fact, I think there's a small wetland there as well. Um, again, the car, the site was a former car wash that was closed some number of, of years ago. Um, we are proposing to permit the redevelopment of this site under your CEIOD bylaw. Um, with respect to the applicability of the bylaw under section 195, 111, uh, this project is located in your roadside commercial district, RB, uh, CB, excuse me. Uh, and it is our position that it qualifies for CEIOD applicability. Uh, if the board does determine that the site is, or buildings and building, if, in this case, are vacant, obsolete and underutilized. Um, I know we provided in our application some photos for those of you who haven't been by the site lately, but it is significantly, uh, obsolete and certainly underutilized in its current form. Uh, for the, furthermore, it is our position that the site qualifies under section 195, 110B as a commercial or industrial redevelopment project, uh, whereas it involves the complete demolition of the existing building and parking lot and the reconstruction of a new building and parking area, uh, all of which, uh, is part of the definition of a commercial or industrial redevelopment project. However, unfortunately, uh, this is not an as-of-right project for two reasons. One, uh, we are talking about more than 20,000 square feet of development and, and once you go over 20,000 square feet, it's no longer an as-of-right project, but rather requires a special permit under the CEIOD bylaw. Uh, also, uh, we are proposing to increase the size of the existing structure significantly. That too would drop us out of an as-of-right project, thus requiring the special permit. So we are actually here in the first instance to, to get your determination of whether the bylaw is applicable, uh, to this particular proposal, and then if so, we would move forward for a special permit, uh, in order to redevelop the site. Um, I would like to say, uh, one last thing, and that is that, uh, we would also be seeking a special permit pursuant to section 195, 114 and Table 1, as we are proposing to exceed the allowed floor area ratio, uh, for the site. And it's my understanding that that would then require an additional and separate special permit from this board to, uh, so exceed that, uh, far requirement. Um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Katie, and Katie can give you a more detailed description of the site and what we're proposing to do and, and why what we're proposing to do, uh, falls in line with the requirements and the purpose and intent of your CEIOD bylaw. I know we supplied, uh, with our application, a very comprehensive narrative of the project where we walked through all of that, but I think, uh, it would be helpful to give you a quick overview of, of, of why we believe this qualifies. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Katie Enright with Howard Stein Hudson. Um, if I may, um, Nancy, can I borrow your speaker a little bit so I can stand and point?
Sure. Watch the water.
Yep. Just point it in my direction. I'll try to speak loud. Um, as, um, Doug said, the proposal is for a three-story self-storage building at the old car wash site. Um, I'm pretty familiar with the site. I did do the site plan for the contractor's garage behind here. I've also done, um, some preliminary, um, review of the site that is, that is currently behind the site here. I've supplied you with pictures of both of those sites. Um, currently the lot sits, this is Route 3. There's a, there's a vegetated area between Route 3 and the subject site. This is, as Doug said, the back of Walmart. This is Taylor Rental and some other businesses through here. Um, and then at the back here, there's a, there's a, um, contractor's garage that wraps around and then the caper landfill behind that. Um, this site consists of the car wash, which still exists at the front, um, and a significant amount of pavement on the front side. There's also a significant amount of pavement on, on the back site that makes up this local parcel. Right now, this is currently, it looks like it's just being used for, um, extraneous parking. I'm not sure who's parking there, but there are vehicles parked in there. It's essentially a big paved area. Um, the proposed development that we're looking at doing here is, is less than the existing impervious and existing building and pavement that's out there today, believe it or not. Um, and looking at the CEIOD, um, and laying out the site, there's a few different things that we wanted to look at. One was the huge curb cuts that currently exist on Parkhurst and Jean associated with this parking lot and associated with the, with the car wash development. Essentially, the frontage on Parkhurst is entirely paved, um, and then once you get past the building, the frontage on the cul-de-sac of Jean is almost entirely paved, um, on that lot also. Um, one of the things that we wanted to do was obviously beautify the landscape. So what we did was we pulled the building back significantly. I believe this is over, this is 94 feet from, um, the preliminary property line at Parkhurst, which gives us a significant amount of landscape area, which will obviously beautify the streetscape in that area. It also brings us off GNAV from the existing building and allows us to create a, a very nice landscape buffer also along that area. Currently, there's a chain link fence there and it's pretty overgrown with trees and weeds and shrubs that, that must have taken over over time. Um, and then obviously up at the cul-de-sac too, we're also providing, uh, additional greenscape in excess of 30 feet, I believe is the closest point we're getting to GNAV. Um, what we're also doing by doing this, by, by proposing this development is with the reduction in paved area for parking, um, obviously the stormwater is going to get significantly better. Rooftop runoff is considered clean. Um, we haven't designed a drainage system yet, but we would look at infiltrating some of the rooftop runoff. We would be considered redevelopment because we are less in the proposed condition as far as the amount of impervious, but then we would also look at treating the very small amount of parking that we have on site. So at one per, um, 100 units of parking with 800 units potentially in this building, we're, we're really only looking at eight spaces, um, to be striped on the site. Um, the aisle around the building is 30 feet wide, and I can show you, I've prepared a fire truck plan just to show you how it easily accesses around all sides of the building. Um, 30 feet wide is essentially, so if somebody comes up and wants to get into their unit or park by the door, they can pull up next to the building parallel if they wanted to, and a car obviously still has, um, significant space to get by over the 20 foot required for a fire lane. Um, but there would be no striped parking at the side and rear. Um, we've proposed sidewalks anywhere where there's not pavement connecting into, um, the paved areas and then out to Parkhurst Road where we're proposing a sidewalk along Parkhurst. Um, I know that there's not one there today, um, so we could definitely talk about that, but we are preparing, um, proposing fire access from all the doors out to a right-of-way. Um, utilities for the site, um, obviously will be pretty small, especially compared to a car wash use. Um, sewer for this building is very, very small, and obviously the town of Chelmsford has a sewer agreement with LOL and, um, sewer is, is not, um, easily come by these days. So this proposal is actually very, very small for the amount of sewer. I think for dry storage, it's 15 gallons per day per person, um, and I don't believe there's really going to be anyone, um, but one person on site at any given time and/or people that come and go, um, that would need to use the facilities. Therefore, also water use is pretty significantly small. Um, there are wetlands, um, on the side of the site here and then far back to the rear of the site, so we would need to go to Conservation Commission with this proposal. We have not had the wetlands flagged or the lots surveyed yet, um, dependent on, um, how this board feels about the proposed project. Um, the architecture has been prepared, um, by Juliana Hotch, who works for J.D. Lagras and Associates. You've seen other projects by her in the area. She did the Skipps redevelopment design, um, very familiar with your bylaw. I prepared, or I provided her with the design standards, um, in the town of Chelmsford, um, for industrial type buildings, and she used that when developing, um, the building architecture for the site. I think she's also supplied you with some additional information that would hide the utilities by creating curb cuts around the building. She also made sure she really kind of looked at the pedestrian, um, feel, um, adjacent to the streets, and what we've done is we've provided essentially a smaller area at the front with the pedestrian access with a significant amount of windows on the front and then the side here to allow for a smaller scale when you look in from Parkhurst Road and/or from GNAV. Um, and I believe you have those. You also have, um, some pretty perspective drawings that kind of show you some of the colors, some of the banding, the windows and what the view should ever look like from the road. Um, the dumpster, we would propose to put all the way at the back of the building, again, to hide it from Parkhurst. Um, we have prepared some preliminary landscape plans, and you're familiar with Lorraine Black. She's here tonight to talk about kind of her vision, um, a little bit for the site as, as it hopefully moves forward. Um, again, traffic, I think, was the last thing I'd like to speak to typically with self-storage, the traffic is not at peak times. People usually aren't, you know, nobody's rushing there in the morning at work time or rushing there in the evening, so it's pretty much scattered throughout the day and on the weekends, so I think this would be a pretty minimal use for Parkhurst Road, um, and also as far as an impact to a butters. Um, I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Lan, uh, to Lorraine at this time. I wanted to kind of touch on a little bit, I know I summarized all of the CEIOD, um, requirements. I was a little bit repetitive in some areas, so I was kind of just trying to touch on everything that we looked at in looking at this project, and, um, I'll let Lorraine speak for a minute.
Good evening, Lorraine Black, landscape architect. Um, as Katie had mentioned, um, as Katie had mentioned, uh, they did set the, um, building back, so it gave me a great opportunity to be able to do more landscaping in the front, at least for this conceptual plan. Um, a lot more curb appeal, a lot more interest along, uh, Parkhurst Road. As you see, just on the symbols, that there's a mixture of deciduous and, uh, evergreen plants. Um, I really looked at trying to, uh, provide a landscape buffer, but not doing it just a line, just sort of a marching soldiers down the edge of the roadway, but really sort of look at, um, trying to incorporate some, um, serpentine lines and sort of a softer edge. I think that gives a, a nice contrast to the area and to the building. Um, provided, if you're coming from the north, provided, uh, some areas for some larger shade trees on the side, again, sort of softening, you know, the corner of the building from, as you travel along Parkhurst. Uh, at the entrance, as you come in, probably smaller flowering trees, um, creating a nice entrance line as you come into the site itself. Certainly, uh, one thing I've looked at is coming up with sort of a preliminary planting palette. Um, a lot of these plants, you've probably seen on a number of my projects, but again, they're, um, drought tolerant and kind of a nice picture for seasonal interest. Um, so this is sort of the direction I'm looking at and going, uh, possibly doing flowering pears coming in. Um, certainly some of the honey locusts are great for drought tolerant plantings, and then, of course, the ground covered junipers, and then some of the ornamental grasses and such are really also good for, um, low maintenance and drought tolerant plantings. So this, um, again, along the front too, we also have areas, they, Katie has set the sidewalks back enough so that I have, uh, a nice area to do some plantings along the entrance and along the, the base of the entrance of the, um, storage building itself. Um, so then, questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I guess it's us. Uh, hey, Henry.
Hi.
You want to take a shot?
Looks good. Um, I, uh, I think it's a good fit. The only thing that I, the only question I have for you is, uh, where you put the snow? You got all these beautiful plants around there.
Right. So I have to work with Lorraine, and obviously there'll be some understory to some of these plants along this bucket here. There'll be some, and there, and there's not a significant amount of pavement on the site, so there'll be, um, you know, once we get the wetlands flagged, we'll have to understand and stay away from there, obviously. We'll have some understory stuff in here that we could probably grow some snow lawn, but...
Or have a plant to haul it away.
There isn't really a significant amount of pavement, but yes, indeed, we will have to, we will have to make sure that we have some.
Well, and even those, the plants in the back where the dumpster is, those are set back, so, um, you've got 10, 15 feet, that's certainly planted too.
It, I think, I, I think this is, as far as I'm concerned, is kind of why we'll look at the CEIOD. Uh, I think it would be a good fit for the neighborhood, but that's just my vote.
Ed?
Yeah. Um, concept's fine. If it moves forward, I, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but just a couple of questions I'd have. Is the location of your main entrance and is it big enough for this amount of square foot? Uh, and I'm not looking for an answer, but for the 98,000, I don't know the business, but seems like a lot of square feet for such a little entrance. Anyway, uh, and that was about it for this part of the process.
Nancy?
Yeah. Um, you know, I typically have concerns over big storage facilities, self-storage facilities with these big blank walls that just, you know, kind of form mountains in the middle of the community. I think you guys have done a spectacular job of not doing that. Um, I, I think it's an appropriate place for this type of facility. It's a great use for that particular lot. It's an appropriate use for CEIOD. Um, I'm sure I will have all sorts of questions and concerns when you come in with an actual plan, but conceptually, I love it.
Hey, George.
Um, so, for me, I ask questions, and, um, so you're applying under the commercial industrial redevelopment project. As, as I read it here, the type of project involves partial demolition, demolition of existing building, interparking area, construction of new building, interparking area. Absolutely meets that requirement, so definitely falls within that to me. Um, and then when I read under the purpose and intent, A through Y, it pretty much...
They're all there.
It's, it's all there, so, um, you know, when it comes time for this board to review this project, um, the things that I would, I would be looking for is what, basically what we just covered. Um, and then, uh, the only other thing I would say is, uh, loading areas on the backside and then traffic flow, especially because you have the, the easement from the, the property in the back. So those I would tell you to, to work with that neighbor in the back, as well as with our town engineer and our community development office, to make sure you have proper traffic flow, and then if someone does pull up on the backside of the building, you have, um, space to get out. But otherwise, I think, from my point of view, those things have been met under this community investment, enhancement investment overlay, so I, I would feel comfortable with that.
Melanie?
I think it's a great use for the spot. Good place to be tucked away. I love the idea of adding all this, uh, greenery along, uh, Parkhurst. It is quite unattractive over there, so this would be a really, um, and the traffic flow seems to work. It is, you know, that would be my other concern is just to make sure that there's, um, are you going to have any overhead doors or you're not quite sure yet, or?
I don't believe so, no. I believe it's...
No?
Right, because there's no opportunity, one of the things we're talking about a little bit is security preliminarily, and there's not really a good way to fence the property. So security would really be, someone would get inside and be able to access their units.
And, and I've seen it work in other places. I was just curious if you would be storing big, big things or, um, no, I, I think it's a great idea and I'm happy that everybody's warming up to it.
All right. You're on.
I'm it. I think it looks good. I like, uh, like the looks of it. It's going to look a lot better than the car wash, that's for darn sure.
But that's been there.
It's just...
Um, I think you get some hurdles with conservation. That got nothing to do with us, but is the, the, basically the whole side of the buildings within the 50-foot buffer. I don't know what they'll do with that.
Right, there's existing pavement right now right up to the wetlands, so it would be, because it would be considered a redevelopment, we would just have to make sure that we were to prove to them that this development is better and walk through those steps as to why.
Yeah, okay.
I agree, though. We definitely have a feeling up to go and we have hurdles.
Yeah, that's, that's about all I get on it. It's, it looks pretty good.
My turn.
You're up.
All right. I think this is an outstanding example of what the CEIOD is for. It looks very good. Uh, when it comes time to dig in to the plans in detail, uh, you know, there'll be the usual questions about parking, the usual questions about water, although you've kind of tentatively answered those. Um, looks darn good to me, and, and, uh, if I might make a suggestion, I mean, often we, we consider, um, actually writing up a, a CEIOD decision, but I think in this case, we may be close enough. What do you think?
Think you could vote on it?
I think we'd simply vote on it.
And look at the draft next week.
Absolutely what I was thinking.
I mean, next meeting.
Yep. That's what I had in mind. Is there anybody here that, uh, objects to that? Okay, then.
I make a mo, you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to hear this. I want to hear how you worded this.
Oh, you really... Uh, okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the, uh, finding of applicability for the, under the CEIOD for, uh, 15, 58...
Just read that sentence.
Yeah, yeah. For 58, that's why I was copying this one. Which also happens to be a same thing. For 59 Parkhurst slash 3 Jean Avenue, basically, Chelmsford, uh, Planning Board, uh, moves to grant a positive finding of applicability for the purpose of clarifying this is a special permit, CIRP, within the CEIOD.
Perfect.
Thank you. It just happens out of the mouthful.
All right, we have, we have them...
So the audience knows, we happen to have another one, and we'll look at the motion for that.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Opposed? You got it, and Evan, if you could just write up a...
I seconded that.
Uh, Nancy did.
And just for the record, I, I don't vote as the alternate on that.
Right, on this particular one. So it's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 0.
Thank you all very much.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll see you in a few weeks.
Uh, yeah, when do you want to, well, you can, you can work.
So, wow, we've got to do traffic study and some other things.
Yeah.
Well, some traffic.
Need to see where conservation...
With conservation.
Yeah.
Good luck, good luck with ConCom.
Listen to Katie, you'll be fine.
Katie knows where to go.
Listen to Katie run.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, that's done.
Very good.
Thanks for the words. That's right, it's time to get this one.
Yeah, I saw you looking.
Yeah. Okay, um, now, do we have folks here yet for, all right, we'll put you off a little bit longer and we'll open up the public hearing on the town meeting.
I'm going to step off.
Okay, gotcha.
What time is it on the thing? Is it on a 7?
No, it doesn't, it's not...
There's no times on it, thank heavens, which means we can do this.
I was just scared of something.
Yeah, well, I always, I checked it first. Um, okay, so, I'd like to reopen the public hearing relative to the proposed fall town meeting warrant article.
You scared me. Thank you.
People need copies?
Uh, yeah, I think we're going to need, do these the latest and greatest?
It hasn't changed since...
Hasn't changed, but we'll take your copy.
I think there was one thing that was supposed to go in there.
We'll take it.
It was.
The RM.
Oh, sorry. I'm asleep at the switch.
All right. Eagle.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well...
Yeah, Evan, I, I think last time we did discuss adding RM to this.
Okay.
And were there any other?
I have...
I think that, I think that was essentially it.
Yeah, I don't think RM was added.
Is anybody else? No, I guess.
Yeah. Didn't, didn't make it in.
It didn't, okay, it, it needs, I think it needs to go in before.
So it still needs to go in. Okay. It's like a whole zone or something?
Under applicability?
Yeah.
Yep.
But I think that's, that's an easy enough change. I don't think we need to wordsmith it here.
Right after Village Center Ovale District.
Yeah. Um, before I, uh, call the public in, any, anybody on the, on the board?
Guys, I mean, just to bring us up to date as to where we are. So, we've workshopped this for quite some time. And at this point, you know, the bylaw, from where we started to where we are within the public hearing, we've had a legal review.
Yep.
And then, the planning board exercised its discretion. So, at this point, the bylaw is pretty sanitized.
Yep.
To the point where it is completely voluntary. The fact that Section 195.8 is no longer in the bylaw
Right.
means that the Community Enhancement Investment Overlay District and the Village Center Overlay District are both completely voluntary for an applicant.
Right.
So, if an applicant does not want to do, does not want to be involved with inclusionary zoning, then they don't have to do business under either of those two overlays.
Right.
If an applicant wants to do business under those overlays, then they realize that if their project involves four or more units of residential, they are subject to inclusionary.
Okay.
That's an important point.
Yeah.
Because with 195.8 in there, there was discussion that it was making something mandatory, so to speak.
Right.
Now, it's completely voluntary.
Okay. And we can revisit that. I think this is a complex enough bylaw that...
For here and now,
Yeah.
this bylaw is completely voluntary.
Okay.
A question. Isn't that a good thing?
I think it is a good thing.
Yeah, I think that was the goal of the planning board. Whether we call it a goal or a compromise, the process evolved where the current version, if a developer wants to build housing and they don't want to do inclusionary, they still have some legal opportunities to do that.
Yeah.
Only in certain areas or over the whole thing?
If anywhere in town where you have a pre-existing non-conforming use
Yeah.
or a pre-existing non-conforming structure, the property owner or the applicant has a legal right to apply to the planning board
Yeah.
and propose housing.
Indeed.
That was 195.8.
Right.
Yeah.
Took that out.
So, you've taken that out.
Yeah.
Simultaneously, if it's not a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use, and it's in a commercial zoning district, the applicant's only ability to propose housing would be under one of the two overlays.
Right.
Which would then require them to deal with inclusionary.
Right. Good. Okay, that's where we sit. I guess that covers it. Thank you. And what do you think the reinsertion of the RM in there does?
RM...
I'm not sure it matters a lot.
RM doesn't matter, because all of the existing RM zoning districts are essentially built out.
Right.
They're master-planned townhouse developments with associations. So, there's no vacant RM land.
Right. I mean, you wouldn't... There are only certain odd circumstances in which this would come up.
So, inserting it for here and now doesn't mean that the planning board is targeting existing RM districts. If in the future, the planning board wants to create additional new RM districts, well, then, you know, this is already in place.
Then it would apply. I think that makes some sense. Thanks, Evan. With that, I see...
Somebody to hear from the public.
Yeah, I see nobody waving their arms, gesticulating wildly up here. So, would anybody from the public care to speak to the proposed warrant article?
Sue Carter, Precinct Five Rep. I apologize, I missed your presentation at the last meeting. I was unable to make it, and I've read through what you're proposing. One of my concerns is seeing the payment in lieu of creating affordable units. It seems high. My concern is, is that way back when Center Village zoning was first proposed, one of the things the local merchants said is more foot traffic helps their businesses in the center. And to that end, the original Center Village zoning had some bonuses so that you could try to get some housing and get mixed use. My concern with some of this is that it's a disincentive to go with some residential units and do mixed use. And I'm also concerned that we're sort of doing away with the middle class. We have affordable housing that David Haddison has created. He's done a great job in doing it. It's a very limited window of opportunity. And I'm looking like, if somebody's in the Westlands and has a very modest home and decides to sell their house and go into a rental housing, by the asset of selling their home, they may not qualify for affordable housing with a housing authority, yet they may want to stay in town like many retired people would. And my concern is, is that when you see these fees tacked on to the cost of developing them, that you're going to get sort of the affordable housing and then the higher rent district. And the higher rents or sale prices are going to be partially because of these payments in lieu of being tacked on to a developer's cost, or they're going to skip the residential and they're only going to go commercial. So, if there's not much rental for people who can't qualify for affordable housing, there may not be much left in town for them to rent. And my concern is, I've seen it like in Town of Concord, they have their Concord affordable units or moderate housing income, moderate income housing. So, it sort of addresses the people who might have an older home, want to stay in town, don't qualify for affordable housing, but certainly can't afford the current market rates. A lot of the older neighborhoods, people who move out. And I just don't want to see that happen to Chelmsford, that we lose the middle class, especially with some of the older neighborhoods here who, when you got to sell your house, you're not going to get $600,000 for it. You're going to get $200,000 or $300,000 for it. And, you know, you pay your bills, and there's not much left, but you still have too much in assets to qualify for anything with the Chelmsford Housing Authority. So, I would just ask the board to consider that when you look at your payment in lieu of, because it seems like when you're sitting on that side of the table, you're thinking, well, the developer can afford it. They've got enough profit. But when you start looking at all the real numbers, as an example, it's about $10,000 a unit to pay your sewer bediments and all your sewer fees and your water fees. So, all these little increments add up. And it does come from somewhere. It comes in the price for the market units, whether they be rental or for sale. So, I just really am concerned that we're pricing out the middle class in Chelmsford. And I think we have a lot of residents who are hoping to stay in town when they do retire or sell their house, or, you know, if they get laid off. They want to stay in town. They don't want to be forced out of town. So, I just ask the board to please consider the payment in lieu of so that we aren't pricing the middle class out of Chelmsford for rentals or affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody on the board have any thoughts along those lines?
I kind of agree with what Sue says about getting the prices down. I think they've been saying it all along, that I think they're too high.
I agree with it.
To know what to put them at, that's a whole different...
That's been the whole question for a year.
Yeah.
So, if you've got a number, let's put it on the table.
Well, I don't know. I...
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Just something that I found this week that kind of disturbed me a little bit. And this is kind of towards you, Evan. If a property was in a 40B situation, and affordable unit was supposed to be saved, and it didn't happen, and it's not on the title, how can we make sure that that problem never happens again? I'm going to go over this piece of property with you after the meeting, just because I don't want hearsay to take and do anything.
Sure.
But if we're taking and saving stuff, and it ain't being saved, I got a real problem.
Oh, Ben, you and everybody else.
How do we solve... That issue has evolved over the years. So, I'm assuming that whatever case you've identified is probably from the eighties.
A lot earlier, not that long ago.
Maybe even early nineties.
No, even earlier than that.
But the way 40B works today, and remember, this bylaw, as far as the affordable units, it mirrors the 40B requirements, where it'd be handled the same exact way. The way the deed riders are written is that if it goes into foreclosure, there's a process that the unit has to go through. The housing authority is involved, and there's a timeframe in which the housing authority has in order to find an income-eligible renter or buyer. If and when that time lapses, that unit can then revert to a market-rate unit. That's how 40B works. So, there are cases, and there continue to be cases in Chelmsford, where particular units within particular developments during a certain time period of a year or an economic cycle, the housing authority as a last resort is unable to find an income-eligible tenant or buyer.
How often does that happen?
Doesn't happen too often.
Because, I mean, I just hate taking, creating more, creating more if we're shooting them off the other end.
You know, again, I mean, a lot of our conversations have gone on these, you know, these tangents, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the big question, and I've asked this, the big question for the planning board, and if this goes, when this goes to Board of Selectment and FinCom and ultimately Town Meeting, is not how do you micromanage 40B or the affordable units? It's simply whether, when the planning board is asked to approve multifamily projects, now within the CEIOD or the Village Center, does the town want the project to provide its fair share of affordable housing, either built as part of the project or a financial contribution to the town so that the town can try to manage the creation of affordable housing? It's as simple as that. If the answer is no, that the town does not want housing developers to provide their fair share of affordable housing, then there's no need to talk about inclusionary. If the answer is yes, then this is the mechanism and tool that allows the town to legally do that. And then, we can debate the numbers and the nuances of the bylaw. But it's at the highest level, it's a very, very simple question.
I agree.
And as NIMCOG indicated, it's not a new concept. For Chelmsford, it was first identified in the 2000 master plan, 2010 master plan. So, it's been on the books in Chelmsford as a concept and a recommendation for five years. And as NIMCOG identified, regionally, it's not a new concept. A lot of towns around greater Lowell and Eastern Mass have this on the books, and they customize it so it works in their community.
Okay, yeah. Thanks.
Sue Carter, Precinct Five Rep. As a follow-up to Evan's statements, I agree that everybody should pull their fair share of the housing. One thing that this is proposing to do that other towns don't do is you're requiring the bonus units based on 25%. Most other towns, when they view it as you're doing your fair share, it's based on 10%, because 10% is our goal by, for the affordable units. And they view it as, for every 10 lots you create, you create one affordable, so that the town doesn't fall any further below their 10% goal. 25% is almost penalizing, saying that the other guys got away with it. We're going to make you make up for it. That's comparable to the 40B. And I can, Concord, Stowe, I think Boxborough has it, and basically, they look at 25, at 10%, not 25%. So, if you're trying to, you know, not follow, everybody pull their own fair share, then I think 10% is truly a fair share. 25% is saying, we're going to, on your back, we're trying to make up our difference. I think 10% is realistic. You don't fall any further behind, but you're not penalizing people for trying to create some housing. And last time I heard from David Haddison, we do have a long waiting list for housing, and it's hard to find. So, just my comment. Thank you.
Thanks.
It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a very good one.
We have talked about this. And again, it quickly becomes complicated. But under 40B, first of all, many of the towns, Concord likely being an example, apply inclusionary to single-family subdivisions. They see a lot of that development. In Chelmsford, we don't see a lot of single-family subdivisions of four-plus houses. So, from the get-go, inclusionary was never intended to be applied to single-family in Chelmsford. The goal was to mirror 40B with the acknowledgement that the two overlay districts provide a significant density bonus to begin with. That's the incentive for a developer to participate in those overlay districts. Under 40B, a rental project is required to have 25% affordable, and ownership is required to have 20% affordable. When you calculate our density bonuses within our bylaw that the planning board, the applicant can ask for, and the planning board can grant, it equals out to 20% affordability. On the rental side, the strategic goal is that if a developer actually builds the units on-site as part of their project, and let's assume it's a 20-unit project, all 20 units would count towards our 10%. That's how 40B works. On the ownership side, 40B requires 20% affordability. What everybody hears about 40B is you've got to reach 10%. Yeah, you have to reach 10%, but even 40B projects require 20% affordable on ownership, 25% affordable on a rental.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Just a few things. The previous speaker raises a valid concern.
Oh, for the record, the usual...
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. John Edward, Precinct Five. I also serve on the Housing Advisory Board. There is certainly a valid concern with pricing out the middle class, but there's, I would say, even more urgent concern with pricing out the, if you will, lower class. And with respect to the payment in lieu numbers, I'm not here to defend any specific numbers, but I will say this. If the payment in lieu numbers are too large, then the developer has another choice. They develop the units that this bylaw requires. And at that point, as Evan has said, they're basically working in a 40B environment. And no, I don't think, you know, 25% of the units is a burden on them. As a matter of fact, when 40B developers come in with the same requirements essentially, they're accused of being, you know, seeking excessive profits. They're greedy. And so, I think what we tried to do with this was achieve a level playing field, and I think that's what we've done.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public like to make an additional comment? Well, I'm not going to, we're not going to close it just this instant, but anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I'll talk about it a little bit more. You know, part of the problem I have with it is I do own a piece of property that goes up to a 40B.
Yeah.
You stand out in the back, and you look up five stories.
Yeah.
Are we promoting that?
Comes right up to the property line.
Yeah. This is what we're promoting. We're giving them the dense bonus. Is that really what we want in town? Do we want, if you're going to give them the dense bonus because, so we can get the money, we're promoting higher, tighter to the line, and more units per square acre, you know?
Well, you know, I...
That is what we're promoting.
Well, I'd agree with you.
Come to my 215 Littleton Road, stand out in the backyard, look up, and everybody looking at you.
Well, I'd agree with you to some extent. On the other hand, if what we're doing is increasing our affordable housing stock so that 40Bs don't get built in the first place, we're going the other way. I don't know how this is going to take us.
We're marrying 40B. We've said that several times. We're marrying, you know, and just as Evan said, if we're trying to maintain the 10%, I think Sue has a good point. If you're at the 10% and you're trying to maintain it, which is what this law says, the intent of this is to try to maintain the 10%, we are taking and forcing a heavier section on the COID, you know? You know, I...
This is where, you know, after seven years of implementation, this is where the rubber hits the road. The board, the town meeting approved the overlays that allowed housing to be built where it never was allowed.
We weren't talking about this when we went in with the COID.
No, because we broke it up.
We were talking about taking...
Yes, we broke it up. But, as I said, the 2010 master plan had that recommendation in there.
But we weren't...
Even, the consultant was even hired to...
The planning board members at that time were not looking at this when we approved the COID.
Agreed, agreed. Strategically, we split it up.
But the flip side of that is, unless I've totally been asleep, we haven't had a CEIOD for that. The projects you talk about were 40B projects, and they could go almost anyplace.
Absolutely.
They came in as 40B projects.
Even if we have this, though, they can still put a 40B project in.
Yeah.
They can.
So, what you're talking about is a 40B, forget CEIOD, forget inclusionary housing, they're driving them in as 40B projects.
Yeah, with or without this.
With or without this. So, this is, this is just a way to, I look at this as just... So this is, this is just a way to, I look at this as just a way to try to keep up.
Yeah.
It's not, the 40Bs, if they want to put in a five-story next, I got a 40B of single families across the, I'm one, I'm 300 feet away from a 40B project myself. It's a small lot, 40, small lot, single-family houses. And, so I know what you're talking about, but what I'm saying is, this is not gonna prevent somebody who wants to put up a Kensington-style building, four stories or whatever it is, four stories high, if they want to drive that in in a 40B, they're driving it in in a 40B.
Yeah. Until we make, until we get to the 10%.
Until we get to the 10%.
And so the idea of this is, once we get to the 10%, this keeps us from slipping back from the 10%. And I'd be willing to go from 25 to 10 on this, if we want to do it. I know, we got in the head shaking, but I'm just saying.
You gotta remember, too, it also keeps us in the safe harbor, too. If we meet a production plan, we don't have to say yes to the 40Bs.
Right.
So this promotes little bits of adding that help us get to the 10%. Yeah, the goal is 10%, of course, but it helps us, and we were able to do that with Mill Road. You know, they could've come back a week later and done whatever they wanted, but they worked with us. So I think it's an incentive to have something on the books that does give options, you know? And coming in with a 40B is, there's a lot of work to it, you know, the funding and, you know, all that, and the checks and balances. It's, it's...
You hit it right then. When you hit a 40B, you've got state funding.
Right.
You don't have that with this. You have, you have a tax you have to pay.
But you also have people looking at your books constantly, too.
Remember, this is tied to the two overlays. The two overlays are not designed, the Planning Board did not promote 40B development when they went to Town Meeting, and Town Meeting approved those two overlays. It was intended for small-scale multifamily, maximum, you know, maybe, maybe 24 units. Nothing, nothing's even close to a 40B project would ever be approved under either of those two overlays. The Planning Board would never do it. And I'm pretty confident about that.
I think that's a fairly safe bet.
So it was, it was small-scale projects within existing commercial corridors, essentially infill-type development. The reason that those two overlays were created with the original intent of being tied to inclusionary was that it was the, it was a strategy in which the town could try to incentivize the housing developers to use the overlays to build small-scale housing projects with some inclusionary, so that the town could build its affordable housing stock, potentially reaching 10% without using unfriendly 40B projects. That's the strategy.
Yep. Nancy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I did. So, when we talk about, should it be 25 or should it be 10%, my concern with going, taking this to 10% is that it covers so little of our prospective development, that if we were to take this to 10%, it would be almost meaningless. I could see taking it to 10% if we were going to apply it not just to the overlays and the RMs, but to all, all construction. So if we were applying it to all new construction and we've had the ability to do a 10% allotment, I'd say, yeah, go for it. But with the minimal impact of this thing, 25% is required just to get any, any impact on it at all.
Yeah, I mean, prior to tonight, Sue was good enough to talk to me about this topic. On the ownership side, I don't, I don't think there's a, there's a, there's a, as strong of a strategic need to keep it at 25%. With the density bonus, it ultimately is 20%. On the rental side, I would strongly recommend keeping it at 25%. In the, in the event that a developer actually builds the units, we get to count all of them. That's a major selling point. And as we, as we've talked about, we anticipate that many of the projects would be rental in nature, along Route 110, commercial corridors. That's the strategy. We don't, Housing Advisory Board, myself, we don't anticipate a lot of ownership townhouse projects being built along commercial corridors in town.
Yeah.
So, again, if this is another example where it makes strategic and logical sense to reduce the ownership from 25 to 10, or 15, that makes sense. Because at least, again, there's a strategic analysis that's done that says, yeah, we can, we can, we can make that give to the, to the real estate community, because we don't think that's where the meat and potatoes of inclusionary zoning are going to be. But again, that's, that's a, that's a judgment call, you know, for the Planning Board. But clearly, based upon tonight's testimony, that's going to be brought up at Town Meeting.
Yeah, it certainly will.
And as you can, as we can easily see, because this is quickly tied to 40B development, and it's so difficult to get the conversation back to, you know, with a local solution and a local option, anywhere the Board can, you know, try to address, proactively address concerns, I think the better off we are.
Okay. Very good, thank you. I see nobody else waving their hands, so I will exercise the prerogative of the chairman and say my bit. I, first of all, on the matter of what the payments and lieu ought to be, I look at what they are in here, at least for, let's take the example of the ownership, and the smaller of those is $100,000. That comes out to about $25,000 per, actually, if you divide by five, it comes out to $20,000 per property. Now, that's not an insignificant amount of money. I don't think anybody would argue that it is. But compared to the housing prices that I see, even for the least expensive places around Chelmsford, I'd have to say, that's, you know, 10%. So, I don't see a big problem there, although, although the argument is one that has to be considered. I'd, I'd certainly start getting sensitive about it if that were $200,000 instead of $100,000. As to the percentages, I think Nancy's point's a good one. If we were covering all, all zoning districts or the bulk, I presume we wouldn't, then, then 10% might be a better, better number, but, but it doesn't. The other thing I'd add is that we're trying this out, there seems to be at least some consensus that something of this sort makes sense. I don't think we can necessarily expect to get all the constants in the formula absolutely right the first time around. I mean, the first guys that tried to estimate how big the earth was were making 50% errors, because they only had so much information to work with. We're gonna make some errors here, too. They may be high, they may be low, and, but if we're in the ballpark, we can revisit that, and we can adjust if we find that we're way, way off. That's my two cents. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak on this?
Someone else, someone again?
Well, the same old would be fine, too.
I'm still John Edward. I just actually wanted to respond to something Evan suggested about the potential for lowering the requirement for housing affordable, ownership units. My concern there would be that that would actually create somewhat of a perverse incentive to have developers create ownership units rather than the rental units that we would prefer to have as affordable housing. That would be my concern. I really do think having a level playing field with 40B is the way to go. And I, you said that Nancy's comments about, if it were applicable to the whole town would be different. That wasn't just a good observation, that was a great observation.
Flattery will get you anywhere, I guess.
One little one.
Yeah, go ahead.
My thoughts on the numbers on it, I'd probably be more into it if you were talking like $50,000 right across the board on everything. Because you start taking, like you said, the $200,000, the $20,000 per unit, the profit on building isn't that much anymore. It's, that's coming right out of the guy's pocket that's building it, and that's gonna get put right onto the guy that's buying it.
Well, my concern would be, some of it's gonna come out of his pocket, some of it's gonna come out of the purchase price, you know, it's gonna come out of a couple of different places.
Right back to what Sue said about, about driving the middle class right out of town. And the other, the other thing on the, on the percentages, I disagree with the 25% as well. I'd be more comfortable with going down to, like Sue was talking, either 10 or 15% would be, would be more in line with what I'd be thinking of.
I'm just gonna try to summarize.
Okay, smart move.
Like I said, the reason I think this needs to go to Town Meeting is because it's a policy discussion, right? The Board, the Board, the Board has focused all of its energy on the intricacies of the bylaw, because they want to make sure that it makes sense and works. And then we go, occasionally we go back to, is the concept a good one or not a good one? But to me, it's, the Board's kind of, we've beaten, we've beaten it to death, to the point where it's, it's time to ask Town Meeting. And the first question Town Meeting has to ask is whether they want a local Town of Chelmsford option to create affordable housing that doesn't rely on 40B. If yes, this is the mechanism. Then, do you want a level playing field with 40B?
And then we can talk about what that is.
Right. And then ultimately, it comes down to, where, where, whose, whose interests are you protecting? That's what it comes down to. If the town's interest is, yes, we want to reach 10% on our own terms and maintain our 10%, this does it. If your interest is something else, then, you know, where is the town's interest and where's, where's the town's allegiance? That's what this comes down to. It's a difficult, it's a difficult conversation, because most zoning articles don't have payment and lieu of in there, even though all zoning, all zoning event ultimately costs the developer more money. Every tree, impervious, drainage, stormwater, new architecture, it all costs money.
Yep.
And we never hear developers, it's all part of the business. So in communities that have inclusionary, it's part of the business. And some developers are willing to do business with the communities that have inclusionary, and others aren't.
Okay. Thanks. All right, let me, Katie?
I just have a couple minutes. I just have a question about, I apologize, I'm just coming into this and just reading some of this, but can I just ask briefly why it's relevant to, I guess I understand the CEIOD being kind of a new overlay and housing being created and something, something new that's coming to the community, but why the Center Village Overlay District specifically for inclusionary, and why not other districts?
By the way, Katie, what's your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Katie Unright, I'm an engineer with Hardstein Hudson, and I don't live in Chelmsford. My business is at 114 Turnpike Road.
Okay. Sufficient.
What other districts would there be?
Well, I'm just concerned, so my, my concern when I read Center Village Overlay District is I know, I'm pretty sure the intent of the town is to, is to look and bring in additional housing to the Center Village District. I think that there's a few mechanisms to do that. One of them obviously is 40B. One of them would be the Center Village Overlay District. But I think that there's going to be, there's a significant amount of creativity that's gonna go into developments in the Center Village Overlay District, and there's a significant amount of hurdles for any developer that were to come into the Center Village Overlay District regarding existing infrastructure, that they're already going to have to kind of take on, as far as pavement, utilities, wetlands, existing buildings, potential for contaminants, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot going on there already that they're gonna have to deal with financially that's going to be scary for a developer to come in and take on something in the Center Village Overlay District.
So, within Center Village, if the developer wants to do business under the underlying Center Village zoning district, they can. And then they're not attached to inclusionary. If they want, if they want the density bonus that's offered through the Center Village Overlay District, that's above and beyond what the underlying Center Village zoning district permits, that may be enough incentive for a developer to come in under the Center Village Overlay zoning district, and then they're, they understand that they have to deal with inclusionary. But again, it comes down to, as soon as, as soon as someone says to me, well, it's an added cost, my question then is, well, why shouldn't affordable housing get its fair share? Water, sewer, traffic, sidewalks, those are all accepted practices in Chelmsford. Even though the Planning Board, the only one the Planning Board is involved with is sidewalks. Meanwhile, sewer and water are getting, are getting their mitigation. It's, it's business as usual.
I mean, I agree.
That'd be akin to the Tree Committee going to Town Meeting and proposing a Tree Protection bylaw in which every tree you cut, you had to give the town, you know, money. It's, 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 every, many other towns are doing this, and in some cases, it works, and in some cases, it doesn't work. But it's a town choice.
Let me jump in here, because you may not be familiar with the intricacies. Just below the payment and lieu, in the middle of the paragraph, we put in a sentence that says, "The Board may adjust the fee on a project-by-project basis based on economic evidence from the applicant." So, all of a sudden, we got these, you, the, perfect example is exactly what you're asking. We got huge soil cleanup costs, we have all sorts of bridging to do because of the stream, and it's not economical.
Okay.
They come talk to us, and maybe we adjust the fee. Because this bylaw, if it's passed, allows us the ability, without going back to Town Meeting, just by vote.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Because the include, and hopefully the Planning Board agrees with this. The point of inclusionary is not to kill a good COA project or a good Center Village Overlay project.
Center Village Overlay project.
So that's why that provision is in there.
Yeah, I wanna, yeah.
If a developer comes to the Planning Board and said, well, you know, here's my, here's my mitigation cost for water and sewer, here's my soil, here's my wetland replication, my brook, my brook mitigation fees, this is the number. An additional $100, $200,000 is gonna kill the project. Then the Planning Board is likely, because it's Center Village, it's COA, it's a great project.
Lay it down. Very good.
Right.
Yeah, and I, thank you for bringing that up, both of you, because, because I think that's important. And because of the fact that the supplies, implies, it would apply presumably in RM, but I don't think that's important right here. Both the CEIOD areas and the Center Village areas are ones where you are more likely to find complications and difficulties related to soil, related to drainage, related to all the things that happens when a place has been inhabited by a long, for a long time and has a lot of concrete or waste or whatever it is in the ground. And that's, that's why that is there. And I think it's, I think it's a very good safety valve to have.
Especially since we don't have a history with this.
Right.
I mean, it's, it needs, my feeling is it needs to go on the books, and then we need to sit back and watch what happens. Maybe nobody uses it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, then we know something's wrong with it. What, what do we fix?
Yeah.
You know, but this gives us an option to...
As long as it's clear that there is, that there is a way to kind of prove your way out of it, if, if needed. Obviously, there's limited land in the Center Village Overlay area, and obviously, it's gonna take somebody pretty big to come in there and take on that, take on that entire area. So I really appreciate you giving me time to speak to it.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, I just also wanted to point out, in response to Katie's concerns, that the only place that this is required is RM, and we have no potential at this point to use it in RM. So, it's optional to use it if you want to use the overlay leniencies. You can always go by the standard zoning bylaws in those areas for your project and not use this at all.
Okay. All right. I don't see anybody out there waving their arms. I don't see anybody here waving their arms. I think it might...
Can we close the public hearing?
Yes.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing on inclusionary housing bylaw.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any more commentary?
None.
And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, we're out of public hearing. Now, what do we do next?
Need to recommend it? Is that correct? Evan?
I would think that's what we want to do.
If you're gonna make a motion, whether it's tonight or at a future meeting...
If you're going to make a motion, whether it's tonight or at a future meeting, your next motion's going to be your recommendation.
Now, on that, when does this have to be in the warrant?
Board of Selectmen signed the warrant on the 14th, which is this upcoming Monday.
And at that point, the text will be fixed?
Um, it's, it's not, it's, it's fixed in the sense that you can make it less restrictive, not more restrictive.
I want the language that goes before town meeting to be identical to the language that's in the warrant.
That it would be.
Yeah.
Unless the planning board.
Yeah. Because we, we know from experience that if you don't do that...
Right.
It raises more questions than it resolves.
We can always, you know, we can always entertain.
Right. So, you know, procedurally, on the 14th, the Board of Selectmen signed the warrant. They don't take any testimony.
Right.
I, I get you, I gave you an email from Plough to the board. FinCom meets on the 17th. They will be taking testimony in an attempt to figure out whether they want to make a recommendation. Normally FinCom doesn't take positions on zoning articles, but as you are aware, the following article to this is the Housing Stabilization Fund.
Right.
That is by its definition.
Definition, yes.
Financial article. So they may want some information on that.
Okay. Are you going to be at that hearing?
Well, we can talk about that. I mean, I'm more than happy to attend those.
Okay.
Planning board members are always encouraged.
Yeah, I might, I might want to make a visit to that.
The more participation, the better.
Okay. Um, yeah, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to recommend it.
Yeah, if we're not going to take any more testimony.
Okay, then.
We're not doing anything else.
You have any changes?
Just the RM.
Just the RM.
At this point, I mean, unless you're...
You don't want to change the numbers at all?
I recommend, I make a motion that the planning board vote to recommend Article 23 Inclusionary Housing Bylaw in its entirety as reviewed in the copies tonight with the amendment to Article 195-134 applicability to include the RM district.
Can, I don't know if this would be appropriate, but I'd like to add something to that.
Do you want to make it?
Nope, nope. I, nope, I watched, I like exactly that.
Okay.
With highlighted, if this is appropriate, with a highlighted verbiage of these numbers being able to be changed by board vote, that in, in your question, do we want to change numbers? I'd like that highlighted because we can.
Well, that certainly would need...
Don't highlight it in the bylaws?
No, but, but it certainly would come up at the, at our testimony in town meeting. And we need to make a point that it gets in there.
It's a major strategic point of the bylaws.
Right.
Any presentation we do is going to highlight that.
Yeah, I'd like, I somehow like it presented that that's why we chose not to change the numbers because it's in there.
Right.
Do you want mine?
However you feel.
I think it's just key to make that as part of the presentation.
I think, yeah.
Review the presentation before the town meeting.
Well, we'll do that anyway.
I think, I think, I think at this point, all we need to do is decide whether we're going to present this.
And my motion stands this day.
Okay.
I'll second it then.
All right. Well, in that case, let's take a vote. In favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, two, two opposed, and that's four to two. All right.
Okay.
Okay. So you'll make, you'll make the adjustment to the RM and get the text to Selectmen and FinCom?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and send me the email reminding me when I need to show up.
Okay, next Thursday, FinCom.
Next Thursday, FinCom, okay?
Could you please send us the revised copy with the RM?
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks a lot. Yep, okay. We have one more item on the agenda. This is a CEIOD application.
Yeah.
A continued one for seven progress AV.
Some handouts for the board.
Let's just pass them to us and we'll pass them out.
This should be 15 more. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Mike Fabiano with High Point Engineering, here with Nick Osgood from NSD Real Estate. I appreciate the board's patience in, in delaying our presentation as we had some later arrivals. So if you recall from our last presentation, there were a few items that came up during the discussion. I really just, probably the best thing is to go through this plan and I'll probably address most of the concerns that the, the board had, I hope, maybe not in the particular order that you may like, but I think, you know, the, the points I raised in the plan and some of the conversation I had with some of the other agencies in town hopefully will address the, the board's concern. I have a updated site plan and also updated architecture. The two plans being presented are the same that are in the reduced plans that you have in front of you. So on the site plan, I, I kind of keyed in the notes to, to move around the, the site plan to show you some of the improvements that we made and some of the changes that we made. Point number one, it says removed outdoor storage area. We made a point to remove the conversation we had about the outdoor stores as being proposed in this area. The outdoor storage area is removed in its entirety in lieu of outdoor storage. We are showing some temporary moving truck parking spaces up here in the upper left-hand corner of the site plan marked by that keynote number two. Keynote number three is specific to the conversation about the fire department. We met with Deputy Chief Gary Ryan in person. We had several follow-up conversations. We addressed, the main concern was about a access to the rear of the property. And through the conversations, we are now installing a 10-foot wide grass paver pervious, you know, emergency vehicle mounted, you know, H20 loading. They weren't really requiring a, a larger type of access because they don't expect to want to get larger vehicles back there. It's more for EMTs and smaller vehicles. So we're making sure that we have enough access away around any of the trailer storage that might be here in order to access the back. And we also met with the Conservation Commission Agent Katie Messier and had a conversation about doing work within the 25 and 50-foot buffer areas, being that this is a redevelopment project. Katie was nice enough to draft a letter, that's part of the record, that was sent to, to Evan for public files, saying that they don't really have a concern or that the agent does not have a concern that we be promoting a grass pavered system within that area and that we're not proposing to further impact the, any disturbance that's under existing conditions. Other than the, the grass paver for the fire department discussion, it was more to do about in the future, some hydrant locations, some storage connections and some other, you know, just fire department regulations. And for the purposes of a WB40 turning movement, we just showed through some exhibits that we can make a turn within that parking lot area and the area noted by number two, being that's an existing condition, they were okay with having that be a dead end. If they couldn't make a, a turn, they'd have to back out. So I think we've, we've addressed any of the concerns that the fire department may have in the future. And, you know, as you move hopefully into the future for site plan approval, we'll bring up those points and address them on a technical basis moving forward with the fire department. Point number four is specific to interior landscaping. We made a point to start to bump up and add additional landscaping in the interior of the parking lot. You can tell here, right in the front of the office, there's some low-lying shrub area. And I'll, I'll get to the, the rendering in a little bit, but on the site plan, you'll see some low-lying shrubs directly in front of the office and then some extra interior landscaping running long, out along the security fence. Thought that was appropriate and it didn't really, you know, force any type of screening to the building that we, you know, were spending some extra money making some glass facade and whatnot. But I think the, the bump out and the landscaping will further help improve some of the stormwater, you know, quality on the site and also, you know, take some of the impervious for stormwater improvements for the site as well. The, also near the front of the, of the access, we decided to further bump out the, the landscaping as it comes through the throat of the building, which allows us to add some deciduous trees along the frontage of Progress Way and also allows us to further increase the stormwater capacity of that point number six to increase some of the flood routing properties for the site. Point number, point number five is specific to a pylon sign. I don't believe last time we spoke to you about signage, but we wanted to note in our presentation that as far as signage goes, what the proposal is calling for now is that we're going to have a small, lower-profile pylon sign that's fronting on Bill Rooker Road, Route 129. We're proposing to not have a pylon sign which exists there today on Progress AV, to remove that and to make use of signage on the front of the building. And if the square footage should allow signage on the rear building as it fronts Route 3. So this existing pylon sign that was for the Gnight Pool manufacturer is going to be removed and be replaced with some deciduous trees in that location. Point number six speaks to the stormwater improvements which I mentioned. And point number seven, I wanted to make a point to highlight on the site plan, the red line as it runs around the perimeter of the site, that this is a secure location that once you go through the gate, behind the gate is secure. So this red line on the left-hand side of the plan by point number two, shows a red line that goes up along the rear of the property and circles back around and the red line in the front as it comes away from the office, comes across the parking lot towards the stormwater facility and then wraps around the, the property in a counterclockwise manner and ties back into the, the back edge of some of the, the building expansion that's going on. And the reason why the, the fence is kind of further away from the pavement kind of speaks to, you know, future planning for snow storage, that there's a fair amount of pavement that exists and there's going to be a need for room to, to, to store snow and to move snow around. This area is a good example of an area where we can use for snow storage as well as some of the other areas where the fence closure is going to be protecting the potential for any snow storage into a stormwater management area, which is typically a no-no. But other than that, there's going to be areas within the parking lot to snow store. And we made a point not to, to really overdo it with some of the interior landscaping. So just like some of your presentations earlier, you know, moving snow around and, and putting it into a heavily landscaped area tends to be a challenge from a maintenance standpoint, damage to trees and, you know, it's increased costs as, as time goes on. But I think from an overall site plan standpoint, the site lays out pretty well now. I'm personally happy with the, with the logistics of the vehicular movements. We made a point to, to test these larger trucks where if, if moving trucks should come across country, that they have enough room, which is well beyond emergency apparatus, but enough room to maneuver into the site, to back into this area, even if they need to turn around in here, there's capability of doing that and they can all do that within the premises. And then these, these trucks, if they should be parked there temporarily, are out of the way of this graph paver system for fire apparatus. And, you know, this is definitely an added benefit for a storage facility because there's a number of facilities that are around that don't have access for larger vehicles to come to do deliveries. It tends to be a lot of the problems with some of the storage facilities.
We just saw that.
Yeah. Yes.
Regarding architecture, my client, Nick may want to speak to this a little bit, but they, the architect, I think, did a very good job at bringing some of the, some of the themes in the area, using some of the design guidance to, to kind of change course and come up with a, with a, with a different plan. You can see some of the, the red brick, the red brick pavers, or not pavers, but the, the columns introduced into the plan. There's a wood trellis system that's in between the brick piers to add some, you know, shadow boxing and some more architectural interest. The glass facade and curtain walls across three floors is a good touch. This yellow banding that's happening here is to help protect the, you know, the, the floor system in between the glass panels. There's also a, a bottom block paver that's running along the bottom as well as, you know, more red brick columns throughout in between the storage space. These, these doors that you see on the front face and the side face are roll-up where there's going to be individual storage units behind those units. But then, you know, in the mix of the rest of the unit, the access is happening behind this fence where if you look at the site plan, these doors here, there's going to be storage units here, the doors along the front, these are roll-up doors, there'll be storage units here. This is the only tailgate loading area, but the rest of the complex, as well as the second floor and the third floor, the access is going to be in this location where this is the general load, unload condition as well as back here for the larger trucks. And there'll be elevators, you know, throughout that will be able to get you up to the second and third floor and then, you know, to go get your material and, and bring it out. I don't know, Nick, did you want to speak at all more to the architecture?
We took the time. We went through and took all the comments and the feedback and put a lot of time into... I kind of talked to the architect and said, "Look, this is what we need to do and just let him run with it." And he came back with this and I, we tweaked it a few times, moved some things around, added a couple of columns, which there weren't initially, there was only one or two. And the glass was one-sided, so we wrapped it. We thought that was a sharper look. And what we've done is we, it's hard to see, but we put a, an overhang here so that people loading, unloading, this was like a three-foot, give it more, more depth.
Keep them out of the rain.
Keep them out of the rain, yeah. So we wrapped that all the way around. But we used a cinder block, a reddish cinder block here and a brick here to kind of give you a different look. And this is actually metal behind here, but with a wood overlay with that to give it, you know, some depth and texture. So I think we added the landscaping you were looking for and it integrates, integrates nicely. Do you like it?
Yeah, I like it very much.
Looks beautiful.
Yeah.
Bit of the warehouse building?
Yeah.
There's no Bill Rooker green.
No green.
Get rid of the Bill Rooker green. Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody on the board like to comment?
Like to comment on how nice of a job you did?
Yeah.
Changing it around. I think it looks beautiful.
Several of us think that. Henry, Colleen?
Nope.
Guys happy?
Very happy.
Yeah, I think, I think you followed our request.
Thank you very much.
You've come up with some good stuff.
Okay, at this point then...
Can I ask a thing?
Yes.
At this point, have you, have you reviewed this with the conservation and with the fire department? And are they good with what you have?
So we, we've had, we've had a, a direct face-to-face meeting with Deputy Chief Ryan with feedback directly with the fire department. We've had, as of today, I had a, a conversation with Steve at the DPW, Janelle, I think you pronounced his last name?
Yonley.
Yonley.
Yonley? I know I was going to get it wrong, but I figured I'd throw it out there. Takes a while.
Yeah, Yon, Yonley. So there's, there was no concerns there regarding stormwater. The, we have not met yet with the Conservation Commission, but I've had up to three meetings with the Conservation Commission agent. So our, our plan, based on a, a potential applicability approval tonight, would be to move forward to file as quickly as possible, to pull together a site plan, definitive site plan package, the site plan approval submission application package as well as a notice of intent application with the Conservation Commission. And then based on a few different meetings, from what I've heard, from a process standpoint, it is, it is good to start with the planning board, which happens to be on a Wednesday. And I think on the Thursday is the Conservation Commission. So we would work towards Tuesday?
Tuesdays, first and third Tuesdays.
First and third Tuesdays, okay. Well, we were, we were looking towards the end of October to come back. Well, we were looking towards the end of October to come back to be at the next hearing and file at the end of this month. We need about two weeks to pull together our definitive packages for submission and then we have a month in between for process and noticing.
Very good.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Ed?
Okay. If we're ready, ready for a motion?
I think we are.
Everybody's going like this, so...
Had the practice, so...
All right, yeah. This one's kind of easy.
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we grant a positive finding of applicability for the purposes of classifying this as a special permit CIRP within the CEIOD.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none, and you don't vote.
Don't vote.
Okay, you've got it. And do you want to... I mean, you could schedule your next visit now. I suppose you're going to have to go through CONCOM first, so...
So, I mean, to that point, does the next process starts upon submission of the application?
Yes.
Or...
Yeah.
Yeah, so once we submit, it's four weeks in between?
Usually.
Okay. Okay, so I can follow up with Evan regarding the time.
Great. Okay. Well, we'll see you on the follow-up.
Do you want to look at the wording of this, Mr. Chairman, or will we be happy?
Oh, which one's this?
Certificate of Decision.
We got the certificate of decision.
Oh, I didn't realize...
We just happened to have that tonight.
I didn't realize we had it in the packet. Shall we review it?
It's in there someplace, maybe in your pile someplace.
The papers that they gave you when you walked in.
In the beginning?
Up there.
Ah, got it. Okay. Why don't we review this then?
Item 3, Tahoe Rule List should be removed.
Excuse me, I got a question. Got a question for you.
Actually, he should stay on there.
What's the floor area ratio? Is that still .67 or is that...
Yes, 0.67, correct.
That hasn't changed. That hasn't changed, okay.
Correct.
Get out of here before we ask you too many questions.
Yeah.
Run, run.
We'll start changing things after we leave.
All right, yeah, I think George gets crossed off item 3 here.
How many parking spaces are there now?
Eighteen.
Procedural history, item 3.
Item 10 changes, gets updated?
Oh, yeah, I don't vote. All right, you're out of there. I just sit here and look pretty.
Oh, that you do.
I penciled you in.
Yeah, I should be included on 3. I'm trying to figure out who's missing in the thing. Okay.
Okay. So, we had six on that one.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Do we have a new date on the site plan?
They're undated, but I'll do it as presented.
As presented, today's date.
Okay.
Is it still the same square footage, 123, or did we change that?
The 123, 036, you know, plus or minus 100.
Okay, 123, 036, okay.
Yeah. Well, that's... It's the 0.67.
Yeah, I'm just... We're just trying to get the written one.
Right. It's 123, 100, plus or minus.
And the new footprint's 41,000 square feet?
Plus or minus, correct.
Plus or minus.
Yes. I think when I read the draft earlier, it was just the square footage, the parking spaces, and the 41,000 are the only three that I saw that needed adjustment, which we just brought up.
How many parking sp...
There's 18. There's 18 parking spaces shown on this site plan, but that includes the four moving truck spaces that are in the rear.
Okay, do we have that someplace, Evan?
Number 10.
It's on the plan.
10.
So, there's 15 vehicle parking spaces.
There's 14 and four.
14 and four.
Seven.
And then four temporary truck spaces.
Okay, we'll get that straight.
Okay, so it's 14 plus four, not a number, but four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I've been through it. Looks good to me with the changes.
Yep.
All right. I'll get it signed as soon as I get a copy in my email.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you much.
I don't know. I thought I was going to give a 45-minute speech on the... Obliviation on nothing.
No.
No? No? Okay.
So, have we been through all of our agenda items?
We have. We've covered them all.
In that case...[1770.33]